Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call this meeting, this county council meeting for February 24th at 6 o'clock. The order. At this time, we will pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, I'd like to say that Councilman Gadsden will not be here tonight. Also, I would like to ask all council members that we refrain from using our phones during council time, that we can pay attention to the council business at hand. At this time, can I get approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Mr. Chairman, there's one thing, one change I'd like to make. Under the county administrator report, if we could delete 14C, please.
Can we get a motion on that?
Second.
Okay, all right. It's been motioned in second. Is there any question? Are we prepared to vote? All in favor, say aye. Pose his name. C is removed from the agenda. Now, can we get a motion for the agenda amended?
I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Okay, been motioned that we approve the agenda as amended. Are you prepared for question? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose his name. Let the record show that 6-0. Okay, invocation by Councilman Doug Pauli.
Let us pray. Lord, thank you for everyone that's here tonight. Please bless these council members as we make decisions that's in the best interest of Fairfield County. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Pauli. Okay, now we're down to approval of minutes, regular meeting on 2/10, February 10th, 2025. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, I, yes.
And Mr. Chairman, just a small detail. When we, at the last meeting, we had moved 9, I think it was 9B, which was a resolution to hire the new administrator. We had moved that past the executive session, but it still shows up just in the minutes ahead of that. I don't know if that matters, but if that needs to be corrected, we can.
I think inasmuch, Mr. Goldbach, I think that's a good point. If the minutes reflect that it took place in sequential order and as much as the agenda was amended to conduct that, I think that portion just can be moved and that just be annotated that that item took place after executive session, and then I think that'll be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, can we get a motion on the amended?
Second.
Okay, all right. It's been a motion that we amend the, the, the regular meeting of minutes. Are you prepared for question? All in favor? Pose his na- Okay, let the record show 6-0. All right, now we're down to public presentation, a county reassessment, and from Mr. Hensley, our tax artist, Mr. Hensley?
Assessor.
Assessor, I apologize.
Good evening. I'm Gary Hensley, I'm a Fairfield County Tax Assessor. Mr. King, you asked me to come tonight just to kind of go through the reassessment process for 2025. We are required to do that once every five years by state statute. And so right now, we're in the process of updating all of our cost tables and land values, that type of stuff. The, um, well, which, those are updated based on prior year sales. So we can go back three or four years, analyze all the sales and everything, and kind of update based on that. We're also out measuring our new construction right now. So, you know, the public will see us out and about time to time. And so, once we get through all that, we'll calculate our file. Then we'll, we'll kind of graph everything to look at where outliers are and that type of stuff, you know, on a standard deviation. And then go out, try to correct all of that stuff, any arrows that we find. And so, once that's done, the outliers, we'll kind of bring those back in check if, if we can. And once that's done, identified and corrected and everything, then we will calculate again and forward everything to the state for their certification. Normally, it takes them about a week or so to do it from the time they get it. So it is, it's pretty quick. And once we get that back, we'll send out the reassessment notices. And what that does is that starts the appeal process. Every taxpayer has the right to appeal our values if they don't agree with them. And that process is about 90 days. You have 90 days to appeal. I can tell you that last time we did the reassessment was 2019, 2020. And values were really low. Sales were almost nonexistent back then. This go around, sales are really good in Fairfield County. So I can almost tell you pretty much everybody's values are going to increase. The, um, one saving grace that the, you know, the, the state puts out there for us is there is a 15% cap in place. So if, just for example, if, if in 2024, your property was valued at $100,000, 2025, we're saying it's $250,000. If you fall under that cap and if you qualify for that, then your taxable value only goes to $115,000. So even though we're saying it's worth 250, 115 is what you're going to be taxed on. So it's kind of a safety net that the state has in place. Lastly, our timeframe, we're trying to get everything done by the end of June and sent to the state. That first week of July, like I say, normally it'd take them a week or so to get certification in place. And then we'll send out notices after that and, you know, start looking at appeals. And we, we look at those on a one-on-one basis. And so, and like I say, everybody has to, has the right to appeal.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Hensley. Appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Did you say that, am I correct in stating that you used the prior year, prior year, your, prior year sales?
We, we, we look at the, the prior five years with the, the most weight on the, on the most recent three years of sales, yes.
And for a neighborhood, like the folks who live on Lake Watery, I mean, the property values on the lake of, in that five-year period have probably gone up quite a bit. Do you do like street by street, neighborhood by neighborhood, or is it, look at the entire lake as a whole?
The entire lake as a whole.
Thank you.
Is it, would that be the case for the next, in the next five-year assessment? The 15% cap would be based on the prior increase. Example like you gave a minute ago, from 100 to 115, would that same calculation be based?
Yes, at the end of the next, it would be based on, if nothing changes on the property, no transfers, no new construction, anything like that, then it's, it would be, but next reassessment period would be based for that example on 115,000, plus 15%.
Mr. Chair? With Sir Pauli.
No, I was just to ask Gary maybe elaborate a little bit on the assessable transfers of interest, how that changes that 15% cap? How the sale or it triggers a reassessment?
Sure. Well, what that does is, is if it's a transfer between non-related parties, such as not as a husband-wife. And there's, there's other criteria too, but for the most part, if, if you transfer, say Mr. Goldback transfers 50% interest to your brother, that triggers an ATI, an assessable transfer of interest, which means the, the year after that transfer, the cap will come off and it'll go to full market value. Yeah.
Mr. Hensley, I just want to thank you for being here.
Yes, sir.
Thank you in your department for what you do.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I did owe that. Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, now we're, now we're down to public comment section.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of Council Brandon Pink.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for gathering here tonight for this important conversation about our shared future. We stand at a pivotal moment where the choices we make can shape the trajectory of our county. It is in this spirit and hope and responsibility that I speak to you all tonight. Unfortunately, over the years, concerns regarding the lack of transparency, accountability, and other pressing issues have created a growing disconnect between the county council within, because of preconceived bias towards one another, and also the residents they serve. It is time to bridge this gap, and I believe that the new chairman is the one to make this happen. We are calling on each member of the county to engage in meaningful dialogue with each other and the community. Ensure open access information without having to file a FOIA request and take actionable steps to address our concerns and needs, not wants. This is not about division, it's about collaboration. It's about ensuring that our local government is working for the people, with the people, and most importantly, with each other. Let's work together, acknowledge the mistakes that have been made, devise a plan to correct those mistakes, and move forward so that we can create a more transparent and inclusive future for our community and generations to come. Each of us here should be committed to the well-being and prosperity of our community. We may have different ideas about how best to achieve these goals, and that's perfectly normal. It's a testament of the diversity and thought that makes our community vibrant and strong. However, along this journey, we must acknowledge that disagreements can sometimes give rise to division and resentment. These feelings, if left unchecked, can hinder our ability to work together efficiently and delay the progress we all wish to see. Admitting when we are wrong is not a sign of weakness, but a mark of wisdom and maturity. It's an acknowledgement that none of us has all the answers and that we all have room to grow. I urge each of us in this room tonight, myself included, and those that may be watching online, to reflect on our actions and words and recognize where we might have faltered or misunderstood one another. Furthermore, I encourage all of us to let go of any lingering bad feelings we might harbor towards one another. These feelings can cloud our judgment and prevent us from listening and learning with an open heart. Let us focus on forgiveness and understanding, as these are the pathways to healing and unity. By putting aside our differences and grievances, we can come together to build a future that reflects our shared values and goals. Imagine the possibilities when we collaborate with kindness, respect, and a shared vision. In conclusion, I call upon each of us to commit to unity, to rise above division, and move forward as one. There's much work to be done, and we must do it together. Our collective strength, goodwill, and dedication-
Mr. Pauli, sir. I apologize.
I still had time. The clock was still running.
That was just a warning buzzer.
I, it was, thank you. There's much work to be done, and we must do it together. Our collective strength, goodwill, and dedication to the greater good can lead us to achieve the remarkable things we want to see. Thank you all for your attention and your commitment to our community. Together, let us unite a renewed spirit of cooperation and hope as we move forward, as not, not as individuals, but as a united community. As I always say, if you break down the word "community" at the end, you find the word "unity." So without unity from all of us, we can never truly have a community. Thank you.
Chris Harris.
Hi, my name is Chris Harris. I live out at 40 Edwards Circle in the Mitford area. And, I don't know, what else do you need? Okay. I had read something in a site, and I don't tend to believe everything I read on Facebook, not every bit of it. But it was from a site called Saving Fairfield. And a, and a site had a source of an article, or the source of an article, the voice of Bythewood and Fairfield County from 2025. And it reported that three council members were not appointed to any committees. I was wondering if anybody could confirm, yes or no? Nobody can confirm that? Okay.
The first appointment was with only-
You're not allowed to, uh-
All right, I didn't hear you. Okay.
Would you, would you explain, he may not be aware that there's no response?
Yeah, it's no response to him.
Okay. If it is true, I'd like to hear, at some point, obviously not right now, you know, why this is true. And we had an invocation in the beginning, Mr., I think it was Pauli, said an invocation, in Jesus's name. You know, and it would really bother-
Oh, sir, you cannot call names.
What is that? Oh, okay, okay. And it would really bother me to think that maybe the reason three people were excluded from being on committees was because of any arrogance. Or any, you know, does anybody think the indispensable? I would hope not. You know, there's at least 22 verses in the Bible where God's word said opposes, sometimes even hates, their arrogant, prideful, haughty, the proud. I'm not accusing anybody in here of being this. I'm just saying, if it is in your hearts, and that includes everybody else here, we who believe us need to pray and ask forgiveness for this. You know, all Fairfield County residents, they pay taxes, and we deserve to have representation. But it seems like when our council representatives are excluded, we're not getting the full representation that we deserve to have. And a tax report was given. Taxes are going to be going up. I mean, like I say, we pay them. Are we not deserving of, of, you know, the full representation that we pay our taxes for? I do want to thank you all for your service, the time you're putting in. It's not something I could do. I admire you all for it. But I'd like to see some more cooperation between council members. Thank you.
Eddie Brownham.
Eddie Brownham, District 2. My son was with this fellow about the committees. We're not being represented in our districts if our person is not on committees. And the, the hospital, I mean, the committee that you will put them on going to be devoted on to others. And undoubtedly, you don't want them to do anything. And we just need our representatives to be able to represent us. And at this point, they're not being able to because you're not putting them on committees. And to me, that looks like it might be, you know, it's my ball, and you're not going to play with it. So I don't think you need to be doing that. And then my other thing is, after the new members were pouring, I mean, were sworn in and all, and the meeting was over, two people left, District 3 and District 2 left. But then the other districts, they held an illegal meeting. And then I called attention to that. And the chairman at that, and the new chairman told me that, yes, we were wrong. And then the vice chair, he said, we wasn't doing nothing discussing county business. You're supposed to discuss county business right up there and not all over in that corner. And I think you need to start working together if you're going to be that way because the chairman and the vice chairman stated they want to be able to work together. And they're not doing that if you're doing what you're doing now. Thank you.
Boo Major.
I'll change the subject. My name's Boo Major, and I live in District 2 on Lake Watery. I've owned property in Fairfield County for 10 years, and I've had a lot of history with Fairfield County before that. When I retired, I vowed to become part of a, of the people and organizations that are trying extremely hard to improve animal welfare in this county. I've seen what other rural counties have done to improve their facilities, staff, and presence in the community they're in. In the short time I've been involved, I have been made aware of a large volunteer force of folks representing more counties than Fairfield that have an interest in our animal shelter and improving the lives of these animals. With that, I say, why not us? Why can't we, as a county, prioritize the shelter and animal control? It's not just about the shelter, although I will say, the shelter is, facilities are beyond bad. As an example, one of the locations is called the Dungeon. And it looks like a dungeon. This is not acceptable. Dogs living in crates is not acceptable. The overcrowding of the shelter is not acceptable. Dogs held hostage for over two years due to court cases is not acceptable. Things must change, and how do we do it? Well, an effort is being made to get dogs and cats posted on the internet, but they're currently hard to find, so we need to do a better job there. We need to educate the public on the value of spay and neuter, vaccines, and getting control of the overpopulation of animals in this county. That is all paramount. It cannot be done with the already shorthanded staff. It can't be done with the current facility. It cannot be done by waiting months to employ a veterinarian. It cannot be done with inmates. It cannot be done by reducing the animal control budget each year. Without the employment, also without the employment of a Class 3 officer, laws cannot be enforced. On behalf of myself, and I'd like to thank the three animal welfare groups I'm involved with for the benefit of Fairfield County, it's vulnerable, vulnerable animals and shorthanded staff. I hope you all will consider putting money into upgrading the shelter and hiring more staff, which includes a Class 3 officer. It's hard to enforce any ordinance if you can't back up your bark, excuse the pun. I understand there are priorities for this county, but it seems that animal welfare can, has been kicked down the road one time too many. We are falling further and further behind other rural counties, but our animal population keeps increasing. Dogfighting is rampant, backyard breeding is out of control. We need your help. Hopefully, you all can find positive common ground when it comes to the sake of the animals. Those of us that are residents that care deeply about their welfare and hope that you please prioritize the shelter and animal control as an area of desperate need of funding and not a want. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Kathy Falk.
Goodness. Good evening. Good evening, Council. My name is Kathy Falk. I've been a resident of Fairfield County for 20 years and a member of Hoof and Paw for 15 years. I've enjoyed a really wonderful career caring for animals all of my adult life, more than 40 years. During my 15 years with Hoof and Paw, we have certainly made an impact and advocated for positive changes concerning animal welfare in Fairfield, but not enough. I'm here tonight to speak to you about what is needed and why. As you know, the animal shelter is not only, is, is not, is not only operating without a veterinarian, it is also on a skeleton staff that cannot even write a ticket and relies on the sheriff's department for all the tickets and charges. This is a waste of time and a waste of taxpayers' dollars. So I am asking council and administration to move forward with a request for an ORI number through SLED, which is needed prior to being able to complete the agency establishment request through the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. Our animal control staff is struggling to care for an alarming number of dogs and cats in a shelter that is substandard and inhumane. I have come before you now for several years, asking for significant improvements to our existing facility. We desperately need a new facility. But until that is possible, improvements are crucial to providing humane, a humane level of care. Council, as you move forward into this very critical time, making very important decisions about the budget and about what you feel is important for the welfare of this county, I am asking you to prioritize $200,000 for the animal shelter improvements, not including more staff or a veterinarian, which we do still need. We need a salary for the veterinarian and hopefully better, you know, more staff, along with police, fire, and emergency response. These improvements are long overdue and desperately needed. Thank you, Council, for your time and your consideration. I really do appreciate it. Thank you all.
Randy, excuse me, Randy Bright, Ridgeway, District 1. There's been a lot of good points put out by the previous speakers. And there's a lot of good points that have been put out by many speakers over the last several years. However, they keep beginning to be repeated. We're circling the drain, and we're rudderless. Why are we rudderless? Well, let's go back several years ago. We finally had hope that there was going to be a comprehensive plan that was due in 2021. Then, three planning directors later, we still don't have a completed comprehensive plan. It's noted as draft in, in your website. We still don't have a rudder. That plan contains a hundred-some goals and strategies and priorities. Yet we've gone through budgets without any goals, strategy, and priorities. What has that manifested? That is, with a rudderless county, has manifested four years of economic drought, an unemployment that is 27% higher than the state's unemployment rate. And this is despite having the bedrock of a county that's where 40% of its economy is, is a gimme. It's driven by the utilities company. That's 10 times more of that type of bedrock than any other county in this state has. Yet we, if you look at the, the work of the incomplete comprehensive plan, we lag in so many areas, but we have so many, much potential. Our location, our beauty, our people, et cetera. But we're not taking advantage- There was $5 million in aggregate misses in that budget. That means we had no clue where we were going and what we were going to prioritize. We had $2 million nearly that we had to dip into the reserves because we didn't plan the budget and execute our financials properly because we had no overreaching plan. We have a strategic plan. I've never heard that mentioned in this group at any meeting once it's been put to bed. Get a plan, prioritize, so that we can have these. We don't have police cars without tires. We don't have dungeons for animal shelters. If you talk about making us look bad, all that stuff makes it look bad. A county without a plan? The plan is now five years overdue, and you're supposed to be doing a mid-plan review within five years. So you have both of them overdue. Thank you.
No one else signed up to speak. Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd like to thank everyone that spoke. Now we're down to Item Eight, Public Hearing, None. Number Nine, Ordinance Resolution and Order. Ms. Roberts?
An ordinance to consider the request to amend the Fairfield County Land Management Ordinance Number 599 and the related zoning map to provide for the rezoning classification from RD I, Rural Residential District, to B II, General Business District, Tax Map owned by Hewin and Shannon Lyles. Note, the Fairfield County Planning Commission approved this rezon request.
Council, you've heard the reading of ordinance eight forty-one. What is your player?
So moved.
Okay.
This is essentially redistricting, or excuse me, rezoning or changing the Land Management Ordinance map for that property that was listed from Rural Residential to B II, General Business District. I believe the Planning Commission recommended approval. I don't think that's in your packet tonight, but the Planning Commission did recommend approval. So it's essentially changing from residential district to a general business district.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? All in favor? Opposing? Okay, let the record show six zero. Thank you. Can I get a second?
Yes, second.
Okay, the motion is second that we accept these people to be a part of the voting commission. Any question?
Yes, I'll go ahead, Mr. Goldbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Looking at the applications for these folks, which, there's just not a whole lot of information there, but it seems that Ms. Hennessy has applicable experience, but I don't know about Karen Rosebury, the experience she's had. I don't know if anyone on the council knows her experience in that capacity, but it just, there wasn't a lot of information on the application, in my opinion.
I said, other than what she stated in the application?
Yes. I mean, it's basically she'd like to work, you know, with the community, helping the community, but there was no, I didn't see any, you know, direct experience in, you know, planning and zoning and appeals and that sort of area. So I don't know. She may be perfectly qualified. I just don't know the person.
Mr. Gilbert?
Yes.
I think I know Ms. Rosebury. I don't know of other council members know Ms. Rosebury. I would say that she's qualified. The only question I would have is, just wanted to make sure that both people are representing their districts on these boards. Okay. I mean, I'm only one person, so.
Mr. Chair, should we, and I could withdraw my motion, should we vote on these separately? Or is it okay to vote together?
We can vote on them separate. That's not a problem.
It's okay with me either way.
Okay. Let's do it separate.
Okay.
Okay, all right. Disability and special need, Ms. Gloria Hennessy, District One, can you give a motion?
Second.
Okay, all right. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposing? All right, let the record show six zero. Board of Zoning Appeal, Ms. Karen Roseberry.
So moved.
Roseberry.
So moved.
Okay. Any question? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposing? Okay, let the record show six zero. Okay, old business none, new business none. Now we're down to county administrator report. Mr. Keon.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I distributed at your place, at each of your places tonight, a letter from Mr. David Cranford with the Austin Wilkes Society. We had talked to him about coming and making a presentation. He didn't desire to make a presentation. He just wanted us to make sure that the council was aware of their Veterans Outreach Program. He's their Veterans Outreach Coordinator, and he wanted us to make sure, wanted you all to be sure that you knew about the SSVF homeless prevention and rapid rehousing program for veterans. This allows them to get security, if they qualify, security deposits, administrative fee assistance, rental assistance, and other types of services. But he just really wanted to make sure that you and the community were aware of this program. And if you have questions, his cell number's down at the bottom of that letter, and he'd be glad to share more information with you, but it's really more just an informational item that he asked us to make you aware of.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Keon?
Mr. Chairman, the second item, I wanted to give council an update, which I think is going to be a pretty positive update on our IRS continuing saga, if you will. We have been dealing with this essentially since I've been here, and working with our friends at the IRS is always a fun adventure. One of the things that we have found is that most of the original filings that the county did appeared to have been done on time, and then there are several different responses the IRS can give you. They can either accept it as it is, they can accept it with errors, or they can reject it. And in some of the cases where it was rejected, there are follow-up things that you need to do in order to resubmit the filing, which that's where Fairfield County kind of fell down on the job a little bit, if you will. We didn't do the follow-ups on the rejections, at least based on the research that I've done. We engaged our county auditors to do the appeals process. Our auditors have a division that does nothing but IRS work, and I believe that their efforts have been successful to this point, and I want to give you an update of where I think things stand at the moment. The questions, I'll go by tax years where we had questions. Tax Year 2017, the fine that was assessed and paid by the county was $357,740. The appeal prepared by Malden and Jenkins has been successful, and we are awaiting an anticipated refund with interest of somewhere about $400,000 on that money. So the 2017 money has been confirmed that a refund is coming, should be here within the next week or two, but again, talking about the IRS. So Tax Year 2018 was filed. There was no penalty or fine because it was accepted by the IRS, so that one had to have been filed on time, and there was no rejections of that or of acceptance with errors. Tax Year 2019, the fine assessed for that one being late or not being followed up on and was paid was $370,710. That appeal has been made on the same grounds as the 2017. The auditors have gotten what the IRS calls a tax advocate to work the case with us. That tax advocate has advised Malden and Jenkins that they would be, what's the word I'm looking for, surprised if that appeal was not successful as well, and we're expecting a refund of about $400,000 on that one as well. So if that one does come to fruition, like the tax advocate and our auditors say, everything the county paid will be returned to you with interest. Now, I don't recommend that as an investment strategy, but the IRS does pay interest, and if we don't pay the bill, they accrue interest on top of the fine for not putting it in place. So it appears, if everything goes as has been explained to me and anticipated, the payments that have been made will be returned with interest to the county. Tax Year 2020, there was a fine assessed of $386,120, but it was not paid. It was never paid. The only two that were paid were 17 and 19. But that assessment, because we did not pay it, had grown to $442,668. However, this appeal was assigned to an advocate as well, and everything seems to be in the process of that assessment's going to get waived, and you will not have to pay that fine. Tax Year 2021, the fine assessed for that one was $357, but Malden and Jenkins has advised us that that 2021 assessment has already been waived, so you will not have to pay that one as well. And then for Tax Year 2022, which we weren't even aware of until we started digging into the research, that fine had, that assessment had reached $247,044, but I have confirmation, I actually have a piece of paper from the IRS on that one that says that one has no longer, is no longer pending and has been waived as well. So the bottom line, if everything comes out as we anticipate based on the information we have at this point, is that what has been paid will be returned and what has been assessed will be waived. So hopefully, we're in good shape there.
That's awesome news.
Hasn't completely come, but we think it's there. We think it's going to come.
Yeah, that is fantastic. And so it sounds like the bottom line is, we're going to get a refund of somewhere in excess of $800,000?
Based on the interest, they haven't told us what the interest accruals were, but based on the information the auditors have given us, the first one for sure is going to be around $400,000, and the second one's expected to be a little bit more because the fine was a little bit higher, but it hasn't been pending as long. So there's not as, yeah, we should get at least the principal back and nothing else.
That is awesome news. Wow, that's great. All right. Anything else, sir?
Mr. Chairman, if I might, since this is likely my last meeting with you, Mr. Carpenter starts Monday, I just wanted, next Monday, I just wanted to say thank you on behalf of me and our company, Parker Poe, for you allowing us the opportunity to do this and serve this community over the past year. I really believe that Mr. Carpenter is a good hire. I've known him for over 20 years, and I'm excited for what he can do for you, for this community. I'm excited for this community's future. I will be watching from afar. Parker Poe's had a relationship with you guys for a long time, and we look forward to continuing that, at least on the public finance side and everything over there. We're not looking for the consulting side to come back anytime soon, but anything we can help you with, project-wise or whatever, we're here for you. But mainly, I just wanted to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you guys.
Anyone on council want to say something before I do? Mr. Pauley or Mr. Root?
You go ahead. No, I just want to, I want to thank you for stepping in in this interim and kind of bailing us out and helping us without a deputy administrator. I just think you've served us very well, and I appreciate all you've done, and we just, I think, all grateful for all you've done. Thank you.
Mr. Pauley.
Mr. Keon, I want to thank you as well. You came in and really helped us out, and I think I called you on a regular basis and went over things, but appreciate what you did for Fairfield County and wish you well in the future.
Mr. Goldbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Keon, I also just want to thank you personally. I've only been on council for, you know, a few months now, but before that, I had several meetings with you. You were always very professional. We always had a good laugh over some things, but, you know, I do wish you well in your future, and I appreciate what you've taught me. You're very knowledgeable in this area, obviously, and I really do appreciate the time you spent with me. Thank you.
Also, Mr. Keon, I've only known you for a short period of time, but thank you for your service, and God bless you wherever you go.
I know you're going to miss my daily phone calls.
That's what that phone number's for. Y'all can use it all the time.
Mr. Keon, I told you on many occasions that you are a pleasure to work with, and I wanted to say thank you, sir, for you stepping in and doing what you did to help us out and get us moving down the track, and thank you so much for the IRS situation being settled. We really do appreciate that. You've been more than a professional. You're more of a friend also. Anytime you were asked to do something, you didn't hesitate, and you got back with us. You were very, very professional, and I want to say thank you, sir, and we're going to truly miss you had there's been an opportunity.
I'll tell you the same way I told Vic. I'm just a phone call away.
Well, I'm sure you would probably call you. We're looking, but we're looking forward to Mr. Carpenter coming in and everything like that. But again, thank you, sir, for all that you've done for Fairfield County. Appreciate you. Item fifteen, Clerk of Council report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to give you guys some reminders. You have quite a few meetings scheduled for this week and did not want you to forget about them. We have the Budget Retreat that we're looking forward to that's going to be held on Wednesday, the 26th. It will begin at 8:30 a.m. I'm almost positive you all have received the schedule already. And then on Thursday, the Public Service and Development Committee will meet here at 4 o'clock P.M. And then also on Thursday at 6 P.M., I'm reminding you of the Intergovernmental Meeting that's going to be held at 6 o'clock at the Old Armory. I think that's located at 300 Park Street here in Windsboro.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, now it's down to council time. The councilman, Mr. Speaker?
Yeah, I thank everybody for being here tonight, and thank you for everybody's comments. We do listen to you, and although, like I said, I think there was a new gentleman out here that we can't respond during this process, but anyway, I just want to say that, you know, in response to some of this committee appointments, that I just got to say, Chairman Gilbert reached out to me after the initial committee appointments, and he asked me if I would serve on the Finance Committee, and I told him yes. He also added Councilman Goldbach and Councilwoman Swearingen to committees, which none of these changes were reported in the newspaper. I'm sure this does not satisfy everyone, but we need to move on and try to work together. As like somebody out there spoke earlier, well-spoken about citizens and council and council working together, and we're going to promise, I'm promised, to do what I can so we can all work together with everyone. We do have, we have bigger tasks at hand. We just hired a permanent administrator coming in very soon. As a matter of fact, today, I was at an auto shop in Lugav, and you probably know the lady, her name's Amy, at Rayburn's Alignment, now it's Tracy's. She worked for Kershaw County. She was a grant administrator for six years there, and she couldn't have spoken any more highly of Vic Carpenter. So we do have somebody, I think, with a very, very well-experienced and a lot to look forward to there. But we all need to pray and listen and... But we all need to pray and listen and try to avoid negativity as much as possible. There's always going to be differences where, you know, we're going to have these issues. But I had an old Colonel friend of mine when I was a young guy, growing up in the hardware store, and he always, every time he came in there, he'd say, "How's your attitude?" And it didn't mean a lot to me then, but he, he'd always ask me that. And so that has really sunk in as I've gotten older. And I think that's just so important to, to really think all the time, how is, how's my attitude with everybody, with what's going on? And so let's try to get along and just try to be more positive and I think we can, we can improve this county. Thank you very much. That's all.
Mr. Baio. When the first standing committee announcement came out, I went to Mr. Chairman Clarence as we should have done and as a gentleman to a gentleman and told him what my strengths were. And I asked him to remove me from the Administrative and Finance Committee because that's not where my strengths are. My strengths are where you see them, public affairs and policies, public service, and most of you have heard me talk about public service over and over and over. And this is where my strengths and I want to be on the committees where I can serve the best. And that's where he put me and I'm glad with that. Now, people don't know what goes on behind closed doors when two individuals have a conversation, but I ask that you not make up stuff because that's not what happened. I went to the chairman personally and asked them to remove me and put me where I'm best suited. We have all, we all have our own talents and strengths and this is where mine are and I hope to shine in those areas. So Mr. Chairman did exactly what I asked him to do and nothing more. Thank you, sir. Mr. Goldbach.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. After we found out about the assignments at the last meeting, the next day I talked to, I believe it was the next day, I talked to the, the chairman and we had a very good conversation. It was probably a good thirty-minute conversation and I think at that time we agreed to disagree on some things, but we did promise to work together from that point forward for the better of the, of the county. And I appreciate that and that's my, that is my promise to everybody up here on this council is I, I want to work together. But there are some things, I'm going to get into some details here. I spent a lot of time today preparing this, so I'll be reading this verbatim, but, you know, I think I heard a lot during the campaign about transparency, about following our rules, about working together. And I think I'll touch on each of these as, as you listen to my speech here. But I was elected in part because of three things I said I would do. One was to listen and respond to the taxpaying citizens. Two was to work to create a more transparent council. And three was to work with council to make sure we follow our rules. So I'm going to touch on all three of those as it's related to this subject of the Steering Committee appointments. Over the past almost two weeks, I've received many questions and comments about the standing committee appointments and now I feel like I have a responsibility to respond. Many questions about having only three of the seven council members on the committees. Many comments about nearly half of the county's citizens not being represented on any standing committee. My constituents do not want me, with all due respect, do not want me to just let this go so we can move forward. My constituents want to see a functional, effective council working together to improve our county and that is not what they are seeing. Again, I commit to doing this. I want to work with everybody up here to move forward and to do the right things and focus on the priorities for the county. I wished I didn't have to spend the time I spent on this subject, but I, I did. So one specific comment from a longtime resident is especially concerning. The people of our county deserve better. People are sick and tired of the internal gamesmanship and bickering that has characterized this governing body for too long. That is how we're being seen. That wasn't me, that's a constituent in my district. So my wish again is that we as a council will take this opportunity to turn this lemon into lemonade, pardon the, the cliche, but to show that we can work together as an effective council that is focused on the top priorities for our taxpaying citizens. I'll be making a specific motion in a little while, but first I want to present some information. The rules for standing committees are in our bylaws, which is Resolution Number 2024-07 in Chapter Seven C. And the two rules that are currently in there that I feel are relevant to this issue are, number one, quote, "The Chair of County Council shall appoint members and the chairs of the following standing committees no later than the first regular meeting in February each year," end quote. And that was done. And then it lists four standing committees, not five, so the presentation committee is not mentioned in the bylaws, so that's something I think we need to correct. Second, quote, "Once appointed for the year, no member of a committee may be removed by the Chair of Council without the approval of Council," end quote. Therefore, once the standing committee members were appointed and were posted on our county website, which they were, the only way to change them according to our own rules is by approval of council. It cannot be done by email or any other means, it must be done by a full council vote. So those are the only two existing rules about appointing council members to standing committees. The previous council had all seven members on standing committees, which is likely to have been the common practice in the past. But based on our current situation, I believe we need to add a few additional rules to this chapter of our bylaws. And specifically, and again, I will state this in the form of a motion in a minute, that every member of council is appointed to two standing committees. So the math just kind of works out. There are fourteen positions on this, on the five committees and there are seven council members, so fourteen divided by seven is two. So we each get two committees, that's what I'm suggesting. Second is that the council chair, and this is nothing personal, it's just I think the math again works, the council chair and the council vice chair shall not be appointed chair of any standing committee. This will allow more fair representation of all districts and therefore all citizens. And it will also, I think logically, spread out the workload among all of us so that not any one of us is concentrated with a whole bunch of work. So, Mr. Chairman, I make the following motion to include the subject Standing Committees on the March ten regular meeting agenda and draft a proposed revision to Resolution 2024-07, Chapter Seven C, to include two new rules and one correction. One, that every member of council is appointed to two standing committees. Two, that the council chair and council vice chair shall not be appointed chair of any standing committee. And three is the correction to add the presentation committee to the list of standing committees. Also included in this motion, in this motion is an additional correction in the bylaws, Resolution 2024-07, and that is in Chapter Thirteen regarding the regular meeting agenda. We need to add the Pledge of Allegiance, just to clean that up. And, Mr. Chairman, I do request that if this motion gets a second, that we show a vote by a show of hands rather than by voice. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You cannot make a motion unless it's an emergency motion during council time, sir.
I've checked on that with council at the South Carolina Association of Counties and I believe that we can make a motion.
Unfortunately, this is not an item that has been brought up on the agenda and it is one that's requiring a final vote because of the change to the law in 2014. If there's going to be a final vote, then the motion needs to be made to amend the agenda to include that item. And as part of that motion, there needs to be two things. There needs to be a five out of seven super majority to approve that agenda item being added. And secondly, there has to be a finding by the chair that the item to be added, which requires a final vote, in this instance, the amendment, has to be something that's either emergent or exigent. And so I think that's, that was the indication that, that the chair had about this not being an emergency issue. And I think those are, all the items that you, you have suggested and proposed are things that can be added and amended to the bylaws, but as you'll note, that the resolutions that were passed in 2024, Zero Seven and Zero Six, and the original bylaws that were subsequently amended, that was the 2018, Zero Four, they were all brought before council by, by a amendment item such as a resolution. So during council time, we can't make motions to amend at this time.
But we can make a motion to add something to the next meeting agenda, correct?
Again, that's not a council decision as much as the bylaws provide that the chair is the one who's responsible for the control of the agenda. So I think, i- if I understand it, I think it's perfectly acceptable for you to request that these items be brought forward for council to be considered. And then obviously at that point in time, if it's put on the agenda, and I'll be happy to work with you in order to, to, to get that language specifically, I have no problems doing that. You obviously have my, my cell and my email. We can work on that language to go forward at that time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, then I respectfully request, you heard the comments, I, and I have received a lot of questions and comments about this, that we do add this to the next agenda on March tenth so that we can bring this up and discuss possible changes to the, the bylaws.
We will, we will discuss it.
We will discuss adding it or we will?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm not opposed to not add, uh, not adding it.
Okay, thank you.
I have something. Our bylaws calls for the chairman to appoint council members to the standing committees. So the first appointments that went out, Dan, Don and myself were not appointed. The second ones that went out, all six of us up here was appointed, but myself. And so I would like, Mr. Chairman, for you to tell me, is there a reason why I was not appointed to a standing committee? Is it because I'm a woman or what is the thing?
I'll make my response during my council time. This is your time, so I will.
Okay, all right. Well, I thought maybe it was because I had missed one meeting, but as Mr. Clay can vouch for me, I was on the phone and I was on the phone during the executive time and so I did not, I may not be here in person, but I was here during the meeting. And so I know that there have been other people that have missed important meetings. I believe that Mr. Pauley was on the joint water and sewer commission and he missed any number of meetings, not just one. And so I, I, I did not understand why I cannot be appointed to one. And there are people here tonight wondering, I've gotten phone calls, I've gotten emails of why District Three has no representation on the standing committee. So I would be very interested in knowing what you've got to say about that.
Mr. Pauley.
Chairman Gilbert, on Monday, January the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, you were voted in as chairman by a majority of this council. A vote by a majority of council that trusted in you and felt you were the right person to lead this county forward. Chairman Gilbert, stand tall and stand strong in your faith with the Lord. I've known you for many years and know that everything you do, you give it a lot of thought and a lot of prayers. These committee appointments were done after being the chairman for at least a month, so I know you gave it a lot of time to think about it. A lot of times if others can't control you, they start attacking you. I support you as chairman and will always support and respect the decisions you make, whether I agree or disagree. I will leave you with words from Dr. Martin Luther King. The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy.
Excuse me, sir, can, no, no outbursts in the audience, please. Mr. Moegon, would you please explain the duties of a chairperson?
Yes, Mr. Chair, members of council, I have in front of me tonight, just as, as Mr. Goldbach pointed out, it is Resolution 2024-07, which is the bylaws of Fairfield County Council. If we turn specifically to the issue at hand, that as I understand, it's been discussed here in council time, it's the standing committees. Mr. Goldbach is absolutely correct. It's Paragraph Seven C that talks about the standing committees. It begins on page three. It's absolutely written into the record correctly that the Chair of County Council shall appoint members and chairs of the following standing committees no later than the first regular meeting in February of each year. As Mr. Goldbach is correct, he points out that there is a listing of four of those standing committees. I was not aware that there was a presentation committee. I don't think that's been included in the bylaws, at least since, since 2018. But again, if that needs to be in there, happy to make any and all edits that this council, that they vote on, happy to do that. If we turn, I think the, the point that Mr. Goldbach made was organization wants appointed for the year, no member of a committee may be removed by the Chair of Council without the approval of council. Again, that's subsection B, that's on page four. I honestly am not aware of the process. I honestly have not even seen the committee list of the first list or the second list. I don't know which members or council are on the committees. I, I believe I have been told that there was some resignations and individuals stated that didn't want to serve on certain committees and that opened up positions, at which point in time, the next sentence of subparagraph B, the organization, during the remainder of the year, any vacancy occurring on these committees shall be filled in a similar manner as soon as it may reasonably be accomplished, which is why I understand that, that you have done as part of the chair is fill those vacancies. So I think, understanding there could definitely be changes to the bylaws if council wants about the composition of the committees, as Mr. Goldbach said, maybe there's a math issue, you could put two people on, so on and so forth, but there is no requirement as the bylaws currently stand that every member of council be on there. And so that is a discretionary issue, the chair at this time pursuant to the power granted to you as the chair under the bylaws.
Thank you. I guess what I'm going to say now is probably not going to be, people probably really not going to care what I say anyway, but what I will say is the fact that those that know me know that I don't just make a decision without some thought. And, you know, sometimes you make a decision and after you make that decision, there's some conversation, conversation and soul searching and prayers and you change the decision that you made. But in some cases, that's not good enough either. I made the change and the change was just not, since the article came out in the paper, you can believe whatever you want to, believe what you, if you believe what you read or see on Facebook, that's between you and God. But I made, I made a change and I placed people in position that I felt that they were best suited for. With that being said, the role, and please listen to what I'm saying, the role of a chairman holds the most, most authority and provide leadership and appointing roles based on assessment of character, background and ability. I faithfully lead this fine group of individuals in overseeing meetings, facilitating discussion, ensuring proper govern practice and guiding the strategic direction of our council. My experience and longevity on council lends greatly to my ability to assess individual's strength and ability to accomplish goal. My appointment to the committees have been well thought out and given much consideration. Yet I'm not a foolish man. Statements made here tonight by a couple of our members are in an attempt to publicly shame the council and undermine the authority of the chairman. This behavior has been displayed and in turn validated by my decision and assessment as to the professional ability to govern. All concerns and requests have been privately addressed and settled. There is no violation of bylaw as per our legal representation. In seeking to achieve the goal of betterment of Fairfield County, members must address full counsel and for the chairman, the courtesy of transparency. This has not been the This has not been the case with a few. We have been, we have a few disgruntled members who are using the public forum to upset the balance of unity that we worked so hard to achieve. A good leader accept appointments to work at the pleasure of the chairman. Let's get back on track. Stop the distraction in the public eye, move forward to our assignment of duty. I am counting on everyone here to be professional, respectful, and do a good job. Otherwise, why are we here? Hopefully not to divide, but to unite. I leave you with this following from Philippians two-three. Do not, do nothing out of selfish ambition or vain conceit. Rather in humility, value other above yourself. God bless our county as we move forward in our good work. Now we'll go down to item seventeen, which is executive session. Ms. Roberts, would you please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. Seventeen A, Discussion of Matters Relating to the Proposed Location, Expansion, or the Provision of Services Encouraging Location or Expansion of Industries or Other Businesses in the Area Served by Fairfield County Known as Project RED pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight five. Seventeen B, Receipt of Legal Advice and Discussion of Negotiations Incident to the Proposed Sale or Redevelopment of Property Owned by Fairfield County pursuant to South Carolina Code thirty-four dash seventy-eight two.
Okay, you've re- you heard the, uh, reading of the executive session meeting. Are you prepared? Vote.
So moved. Second.
Okay, the motion is second. Any question? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposites, next. We're six-zero. Thank you. We are now in executive session.
Can I get a motion that we come out of executive session? Okay, it's been a motion that we come out of executive session. Are you prepared to vote?
Yes, sir.
All in favor? Opposed? That record shows six zero. Is there another motion?
Motion to adjourn.
No action was taken during executive session. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Are you prepared to vote? All in favor? Opposed? The record shows six zero. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.